Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, December 5th, meeting of the Board of Selectmen. All selectmen are present save Mr. Shifrin, who has not arrived as of yet. Our first order of business is a project update from Public Safety Building Committee. Mr. Mullenowski, if you would please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'm here to provide our first update in a couple of months back to the board. If you recall, when our committee was formed back in the summer, we promised that right after Thanksgiving, we'd come back with a latest cost estimate, which I know that you and probably the town are anxiously awaiting. But I think it's important to understand where we stand in the process to give context around the cost estimate and where we are. So in mid-November, the Planning and Conservation, Planning Board and the Conservation Commission both held their first public hearing related to the project. The town's consultants made a presentation. There were a bunch of issues discussed. Some were remediated on the spot, some were taken back for further review. There's been an extensive amount of work between our consultant and the town's peer reviewer, as well as the town representatives, not the boards themselves, but the representatives, since that meeting. And there is another hearing scheduled for conservation on Thursday night, planning on Monday night. In summary, conservation may or may not be concluded on Thursday night, but the expectation is it would probably be concluded by the following Thursday. So they have back-to-back Thursday meetings. There's a few items there that I would characterize as ongoing items of discussion that are maybe more preference of certain commission members as opposed to rules and regulations. So what we have instructed our consultant to do until we get to kind of the finish line is to continue to provide their professional expertise and plans, until which time we need to maybe make the call on certain items that may be gating to, you know, continuing this process along. That's conservation. I'd say on planning, the two main items that came out of that, well, there's a bunch, right? There's a ton of items coming through just pure review. But the gating issues would be the driveway access and the lighting. At our public meeting last night, the consultant acknowledged that he believes he's satisfied the lighting concerns, and when they make their presentation on Monday night, they're hopeful that that would be met with the board's satisfaction on that particular item. The driveway may be an item that goes beyond Monday night. And it's not necessarily an expectation that planning will sign off on the project on Monday night. There may be another hearing, which would likely fall into January, based on the schedules of when they're holding their meetings and when our consultant's available around the holidays. The driveway issue is essentially as follows. The plan that was presented to town meeting provided two access driveways. One for emergency vehicles only, one for use by the public. The town's peer reviewer, so who Planning Board goes to Fussin' O'Neill for every project, has indicated concerns about line of sight, building signage, just really how you mark off those two driveways so that you or I, as a layperson driving into the facility, aren't driving up the emergency access driveway. What our consultant agreed to do, for purposes of discussion only, was to put together a plan that shows one driveway, should we have to go down that road. We vetted it last night with the police and fire chief, and I asked both to make a statement on that at our public meeting. It's on tape, if anyone wants to view it. But basically, it came with a resounding, "Absolutely not." There are many reasons behind it, from a public safety perspective and a town liability perspective, that they believe it's just not a smart move for the town to undertake. Our consultant has, I asked him very specifically, does the two driveways violate any town rules and regulations, any sort of engineering standard, et cetera? No one has been able to cite anything that it is violating. So I think there will be an extensive conversation around it. I've asked both chiefs to be present to repeat the concerns that they basically echoed to all of us last night that would not surprise any of us, having been through the process over the past couple of years. But that might end up becoming a judgment call. I've also heard that the main, one of the reasons to go to one driveway would be cost savings for the project. I can tell you that our engineer has costed it both ways by doing two driveways. It's a $35,000 increase in the project price over one driveway. But I think when you hear the chief speak, and I see the fire chief over in the corner, if you want him to come up and speak when I'm done, I'm sure he'd be happy to give the same speech he gave last night. But I think it's a pretty serious item that I would say, from my perspective, I plan to be there, but I also, to the extent that the board can, you know, express their support, given that this is your project, and obviously you are the ones that appoint the two chiefs and have the utmost trust in their professional judgment. I think this might be a potential gating issue that we just need to, you know, come to some sort of resolution. I'm hoping it's a very smooth conversation and that everyone agrees, but I can tell you that the town's peer reviewer has expressed concerns with it. So I would expect any reasonable Planning Board member to ask a lot of questions. So I think they're absolutely doing their job. And I would be remiss at not pointing out how collaborative the process has been across all the boards, working with us and realizing that this is a town project and that every board member that's sitting up there is going to be paying some fraction of the cost for this project. So I think everyone has the best interest in mind, but everyone also has a job to do, and we recognize that. But that, to me, and from the committee's perspective, is probably the largest gating item to get us through the regulatory process. With that being said, we now have about 30% to 50% of the construction drawings done, which allowed us to go out and get a revised cost estimate. The cost estimate was done by two separate parties in silo. One representing our architect, who's the same one that provided the cost estimate for town meeting. Separate one was done by Vertex, who's our owner's project manager that was hired specifically for the project once approved. Well, the numbers didn't come in precisely the same upfront. Once they reconciled, figured out where they were different, the numbers between the two cost estimates are less than $200,000 apart on an overall $20 million project. So our committee really passed on trying to, there's no point in reconciling that any further. So we kind of took the high estimate and then compared it to where we were at town meeting. Two items come out of that. The building cost is within $44,000 of what we presented on the screen for actual, the hard construction costs at town meeting. To us, while we've had a lot of conversations about how much square footage, and some of you that were part of this as the board listening to us back in February will know the square footage was a major question. We don't believe that that is driving any sort of irregularities in the cost. So that's the good news. The item that came in a little higher is the site work. Once you factor in escalation costs, et cetera, the site work is coming in approximately $1.4 million higher than what we had on our slide at town meeting. Now, before, anyone gets concerned that that's, we are now $1.4 million over budget. That is not the case. These numbers were done before any value engineering was done by both our architect and by our owner's project manager, who has engineers on their staff as well. Our committee was presented with a list that exceeds $1.4 million of potential savings in the building. And that was a list that they came up with over a 24-hour time period. We fully expect, and they've asked for another week, that there will be additional items that they will be able to add to that list. Some are no-brainers, some are, I fully expect the chiefs to be adamantly opposed to for operational reasons, and some might be a nice middle ground that might be a nice-to-have, and we might have to just cut it just to get this thing on budget. Now, when we say on budget, our committee has taken the view that the budget is $22.6 million, less the $2 million contingency that we fought so hard for at town meeting. So we are trying to go out to bid in the spring, having used none of that contingency. So that should bid conditions not fall in the town's favor, we're not going to be going back and asking for any more money. That's why we think we have a path to remove this $1.4 million of, on paper, overage that doesn't really exist yet. To me, at first, you know, my natural reaction was, oh, it's high, that's not good. But when you really start to think about it, if that number had come in lower, it wouldn't have forced us to go back to the drawing board as much. And I'm not saying we're going to redesign this whole building, because we can't. It's already in front of planning, we can't start changing floor plans, because otherwise they're going to start all over. It's forcing us to look at some things that might be nice-to-haves, might be add alternates in the bid. And the other thing that we've been informed by our owner's project manager is the cost estimate is kind of the middle of the road. They expect that the bid will come in lower than where they're coming out now. We just don't want to take that chance, that all of a sudden the bid conditions change. And, you know, they are seeing an uptick in the construction activity in general. And my personal view is I don't, all the happenings in Washington may change that even more, not in our favor, just because of incentives they're giving for construction in the tax reform bills that are out there. So with that being said, we have a little bit of work ahead of us, but I don't think there's any cause for concern. I'm sure anyone that just takes a number and wants to run with it, they would say we're $1.4 million over. I'd say we're $1.4 million over on paper. We theoretically could use the contingency, but our committee doesn't believe that's a wise choice at this point in time. That's the cost aspect of where we stand. The last aspect that is more informative than anything else is through this process, because planning required it, we have to provide a set of plans that encompasses Woodward driveway access, which is not part of our money that was allotted at town meeting, as well as where a golf course clubhouse would go and how it would tie in to the overall site. So as part of our designs, that's all been out there as part of these planning and conservation processes. As part of our cost estimate, our cost estimator did estimate what it would cost to take that current clubhouse, relocate it, and get it set up and operational again. It is our understanding that bond council has weighed in and said that the only part of that cost that is covered under Article 1, i.e. what our committee is trying to manage, is the actual movement of that structure. Because we had planned at town meeting to potentially demolish it, they said, "Well, you're kind of uprooting the clubhouse, so you can move it." However, it stops there. So the new foundation, the parking lot, retaining walls that are specifically not needed for public safety, but would be needed for continued golf course operations, are kind of outside of the scope. That is a $300-plus thousand dollar expense that I'm not citing in any of our numbers, but I feel an obligation to bring forward to you. I've already informed Mr. Pelletti, as the Chair of the Golf Course Committee, that they're going to want to start to talk about this with the board and figure out what your appetite is. But I think our committee still has a vested interest in it too, because should the town decide that that is an expense that they want to bear, and I don't know if there's other capital items that the Golf Course Committee may have, it is in the town's best interest, from a cost perspective, to try to bundle this into our bid, right? And you just have two different funding sources. And we talked pretty extensively at our meeting with our owner's project manager and our architect about that, and they think you could absolutely call it out separately for purposes of bidding. But I think the issue comes is, we're not carrying the cost in our budget, and we just want everyone to be aware of that upfront, as opposed to there being some sort of surprise down the road. So that is our update. I'm sure there are a few questions on that, but that's as best I can summarize where we're at.
All right, questions for Mr. Mullenowski and Ms. Faniff?
Jason, as far as the driveway cuts, whether it be one or two, do we need the approval of any state agency on 85, or is it just in-house? So the Planning Board can make that decision on their own without a state agency?
I see Ms. Galligan shaking her head.
Okay, second to Mr.
And that shake was in the affirmative for people watching on TV.
Yes. To Mr. Purple, the financing piece for the golf course. Have you had a discussion on that, as far as where we may find that money? Or how we go about approaching to find the money, so it's not in the budget?
Well, I can defer to Mr. Ballantyne, who is here, in terms of any financing piece, but, you know, there isn't any funding source at this point that's been identified, you know, other than future bonding.
So that would be another town meeting?
It's always town meeting for authorizing bonding.
Okay. I just think it needs to be very clear that we don't have access to those funds, unless I'm wrong. Mr. Ballantyne, do you want to get up and speak to that?
All right, so he says, yeah, all right, he says Mr. Purple is correct.
Thank you.
And so will that be, I guess that'll be in discussions with Mr. Pelletti and team about whether or not he wants to bring a warrant article forward at town meeting? Yeah, okay. Other questions for the board members first, Mr. Shifrin?
Yeah, so on the driveway issue, is it accurate to say that that's just a difference of opinion, at this point, between the town's review engineer and the engineer that designed it?
Yes.
Meaning the one that did it thinks that with signage, it'll be fine?
Mm-hmm.
And the town's engineer thinks that people drive down the wrong one, no matter what? Just because they're too close and confusing?
Yeah, and I think what our engineer, the town's, what the Public Safety Building Committee's engineer has done since the Planning Board meeting is come up with ideas for better signage.
Okay.
What Fussin' O'Neill, who's the town's peer reviewer, I don't know that we've gotten feedback on that yet, so it may become a non-issue, but I don't think it's going to go away just with a snap of your fingers.
Okay. And the additional cost on the site work, is there like a brief summary as to what that is?
So you have two accountants that sit on the Public Safety Building Committee, and we were sitting there ticking and tying numbers on the fly last night. I would say our consultants, in complete transparency, were not fully prepared for what kind of came at them, in terms of being able to tie it out. As best I could describe it, though, the big-ticket items are, there are some items in the plan that were not necessarily picked up as a cost at town meeting that are still in the plan, and all of a sudden, when they took like this detailed look, as opposed to kind of this 10,000-foot look, they found it. One of the biggest items was a carport canopy that's being used for police cruisers, as well as emergency management trailers. To be completely honest, that's one of the things that was proposed to us, that, "Do you really need it?" It's a $300-plus thousand dollar item. So it's open, I didn't know how much that cost until last night, to be completely frank with you. So I think that's one item. So I think some would characterize that as some misses. Some would characterize that as some new items, just by doing more detail. And then I would say furthermore, when they did some of the testing, the geotechnical testing as part of these last 10 weeks, they just are going to have to dig a little deeper than they were expecting. So that's part of it. And there's just an increase in the cost of those type of services, from best we can tell, now, as opposed to last February.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Rocke?
Thank you. Mr. Shifrin and Ms. Faniff have both asked the majority of my questions on the 1.4 as well. I was at the Planning Board meeting as well, and I know when the two driveways came up, I would just hope that the engineers, I'm sure Chief Morrow has, I didn't watch the tape, so I don't know exactly what he said, but I know if we're in some way in the future trying to connect Woodward School with buses coming in and out, and I can't imagine with one driveway, you're setting yourself up for a liability if traffic gets backed up with buses trying to come out of the school, and you've got one driveway and a fire truck trying to come in and out. So, and I'm sure the engineers are going to be taking that, you know, into their consideration as well. I guess those were, that was my main question for now, so, thank you.
Mr. Shea?
The, any lights at 85 that would be required? Stop signs, red lights, traffic signals, are those included in any cost estimating that's been done?
So we are still carrying a full $400,000 for traffic signal. Our current expectation is based on the traffic counts that were conducted for both school traffic, and we really are factoring in buses mainly, but there was counts done for actual school population on a school day, golf, and public safety. They use the current site as a sample of how many times those cruisers are in and out. We do not expect a full traffic light at that intersection, subject to Planning Board agreeing with the conclusions of these engineers. There is the possibility of a emergency-only signal that would be activated through optocom or some other mechanism. My understanding is that's $125,000, as opposed to $400,000 for the whole red light, green light, et cetera.
So through the chair, if I could ask Ms. Galligan, I know the Main Street project has currently included in it traffic signalization for public safety on Main Street. Under that project, can we move any traffic signalization to 85?
No, sorry. We did check and it's outside.
She's answering in the negative. If you, if it's a longer answer, if you could please use a microphone.
I'm sorry. So it's, we did check, because that was something we wanted to look into, and it's outside the, it's outside the limits of the work, so DOT can't include it as part of the project.
Okay.
Whether or not you could use Chapter 90, you could. But that would just take away from paving somewhere.
Got it, okay. And just so I'm clear, the 1.4 million dollar number that you had, is that inclusive of the golf course work and inclusive of Woodward School? Or would those also be in addition?
So Woodward School would be the school department?
But was that, the cost of that work, was that included in the estimate done by the two firms?
So on the school work, that's not, it is anticipated for that breakthrough. That's not a significant chunk of work. My understanding is that is in there, but we would carve that out for the school. The golf is absolutely not in there, we are carrying it kind of below the line. So if you wanted to include it, you're talking 1.8, as opposed to 1.4 and change.
Okay.
And sir, did I understand that you're looking for consensus from the board on the one driveway, two driveway scenario? Are you looking for that tonight, or?
I don't know that I'm looking for consensus. I think the chiefs are very clear with their message. I would just, maybe I'm being presumptive, but as many of you probably appointed those individuals and continue and employ them, that you would support their opinion. I think what I'm looking for is maybe representation at the Planning Board meeting to speak on behalf of the board. I don't know whether it's one of you or all of you, but I just think that would go a long way to support our chief's message. I plan to echo my thoughts, you know, behind them. But I think the more support we can show around that, hopefully the more reasonable outcome would prevail.
And remind us when that next meeting is.
Next Monday night, they have not posted an agenda yet, so I don't know if we are first. I know they are starting at 7:30 that night, though.
All right, thank you, sir. Other question, Ms. Faniff?
When do you anticipate having the plan showing all of the moving parts for the CR? For the committee that's doing the CR?
I think done.
Because they're planning on having a forum, and they really need that?
That's done, because that, otherwise Planning Board can't approve where, we know where the four corners of the building are, we know where the site work is, unless planning changes something of that during their process.
And all of the movement with the golf course, is that identified on that plan too?
In terms of the holes?
And the building location and the septic system?
The building and septic, yes.
They're planning on having a forum, maybe next Monday evening as well, just to inform the community as to what's going on, and they're looking for a plan. So there is a plan.
Last I saw, it was 200-plus pages of
Okay.
construction drawings.
All right, I'll ask that Mr. Purple see the.
Right, but I think, yeah, just to jump in, but I think what Mrs. Faniff is referring to is, so town council has just finished with the perimeter plan required for the closing of the property. And the CR committee is looking for that perimeter plan, also showing the envelope of the building project, the location of the clubhouse, location of the holes and T-boxes on the entire property, and understanding all of those various pieces, where the septic is going to go. All of that doesn't exist yet, so I just need to reach out to your architect and your architect and get them to, because the person who did the perimeter survey was hired or was chosen, you know, also by your architect. So they should be able to help coordinate that piece and get something done. It's just a matter of coordination.
I think we cut off at the holes. So I think that's, it's really taking the right side of the property, where there's a golf course currently, and layering that on to our plan.
I mean, I appreciate the effort of everyone. I went to the meeting last night on the CR, and it is, it's a very large project. It's technical, and they're trying to do their job, and I'm just trying to facilitate that we get the plan. So I'm going to ask that this board, the Board of Selectmen, direct Mr. Purple to be that facilitator for our, on our behalf.
Yeah, I just want to point out, you know, that, you know, a project of the size of this public safety facility in and of itself is a huge endeavor. And trying to do that, and everyone just kind of assumed that, you know, we're doing this public safety, and golf is going to come with it, and it'll be fine, because it's already an operating course, we got everything all figured out, it's not going to be a problem. I think Mr. Pelletti will tell you, that's, you know, it's really not the case. There are some challenges with this. And, you know, and so we're trying to balance those needs, and at the same time, you know, work on the conservation restriction piece, which can be done. work on the conservation restriction piece, which can't be completed until some of these other pieces are done. So I will work to, to get those to happen, but I just want the board to understand that, you know, it is a challenge trying to balance, you know, what essentially are two significant projects on top of each other.
Correct, but if we're not in a position to see that they get the necessary work that, to do their job, I think we need to keep them informed that it's not ready yet, and they may need to delay a forum.
Understood, and as soon as I get information, I pass it along to Ms. Gillespie, who's chair in that committee.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Rock?
Thank you. Um, Jason, do we know typically, and maybe this is more of a question for the chief, um, or even if the architects can even maybe get an answer for, typically on a public safety building that's set back a little bit, I'm sure that this isn't an anomaly in any way, other than maybe the golf course and maybe connecting the school, but for the facility itself, um, I'd be interested to know typically, I, I would imagine there must be more than one ingress, you know, there must be the dual. Um, and I would just be curious as to what other towns have done, um, on what they have. I know where we currently have, you go in one, you go out the other. So, um, I would just be curious. And again, I don't know if that's something the chief could answer, um, but also, I'm gonna put him on the spot again, um, if, if it's okay with you, Mr. Kalenda, I, if the chief would just take a couple seconds, um, for somebody that may not have watched the meeting last night, such as myself, and for anybody at home that may be curious about the same thing, I just think it's an additional opportunity for people at home to understand, um, from our chief, the safety aspects that we may not understand.
Chief, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Morrow, Fire Department. Um, in regards to the two driveways versus the, the single driveway, as it's proposed right now, um, the single driveway that, that was presented to, to Chief Paulus and I, we are very much opposed of. Um, it's a significant issue with, you know, large fire trucks, police cars entering and exiting from there, emergency vehicles, and coming into opposing traffic from the driveway. And if we, you know, throw the school bus mix into that, the, the golf traffic, and there could be times where it's gonna be very heavy, particularly in the morning and the afternoon, when we generally have a lot of calls for emergencies, such as car accidents and things like that. So, um, in that respect, you know, as it stands right now, we're, we're sticking with the two driveway approach, unless they come up with some other alternative that really makes sense. Uh, to your question on what other communities have done, I don't have a specific answer to that. I guess it depends on how they're laid out and, and their access to a roadway, or, you know, how far they're set back off the road. Um, I do know in Stowe, they, they rehabbed an old school, uh, so they have it as a community center and a fire station, and they do have a, a dedicated driveway for the fire apparatus coming out of that facility. Uh, but as far as other ones, I, I, I don't know any others off the top of my head. I'm sure there's others that are like that, but again, it depends on how they're situated on the street, uh, what the access is and things like that, so.
Thank you. I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
Nope, that's fine. That's, that's quite all right. Thank you.
All right, thank you, chief. Other questions for Mr. Malinowski? All right, we're fortunate to have many members of various boards and committees. I know that many from advisory. Mr. Peters, are there questions from advisory for Mr. Malinowski? And then, uh, you just need a microphone, and you may need to be able to respond, so.
I'm ready.
All right.
Um, Kathy Cook, 11 Greystone Way. So advisory does have a quorum here tonight, but I'm not speaking for either advisory or for the Public Building Safety Committee that I'm also a member of. Advisory is going to meet tomorrow night, and I'm gonna bring, I've got three points, and we are going to address some of this at our meeting, so, um, if one or two of the boards let me wanna come tomorrow night, you would certainly be welcome. Um, the first issue I wanted to address is the statement that was made a few minutes ago, that bond council has opined that the cost of doing three things, moving the current clubhouse and actually putting it on a foundation so that it's functional, hooking up the clubhouse to the one septic system that's gonna be used for both buildings, and building the driveway for the golf course committee is not within the Article One that was approved at special town meeting. So I have asked Mr. Purple that same question. He said they have opined that's not the case. However, last night, at our Public Building Safety Committee, he got up and read the email from the bond council, and that's not what that email said. So I would ask you to, please ask Mr. Purple to go back to bond council again and ask a specific question, which is, can that $350,000 or so be included in the Article One purview? Now, as Mr., uh, as Jason said a minute ago, our committee, our, the Public Building Safety Committee is striving mightily to not spend that contingency. But if we don't do these three things, then the obligation that we have to keep this golf course running, I'm not sure how it gets paid for. I mean, I, advisory may take this up, um, at a later meeting. There, there's probably things we can do, but I don't have a really good answer. The idea that bond council could opine that the change in the purchase price of the land, the extra $500,000, um, that we agree to with the, the extension of the two, the due diligence period over the summer, could be paid for with a owed debt authorization with no issue, that that's okay.
So is that a question under the update from the Public Safety Building Committee?
Dan, if you could just humor me for a minute, I've got, I'm trying to.
No, you may wanna do that under public comment if it's not something that is germane to this particular topic.
I think it is germane. I'm still, I'm trying to get back to the point that I'm asking you guys to please go back to bond council and see if we can't pay for that 350. We really need to solve this problem quickly. That has to get paid for in February or March if we're gonna keep this golf course running. We're gonna start digging in April or May, so we've gotta get that taken care of. So my point is, if we can go back to this owed debt thing and pay for that, I don't understand logically why we can't pay for the 350 out of Article One. Article One does not talk about $27 million. It's got one number in it, $4.5 million, that's it. It says, "Cost incidental to the public safety complex." So I'm just asking that, I'm just saying, last night, the, the email that was read to us did not say what Mr. Purple said it said a minute ago. Maybe there's another email. All it talked about was the soft costs associated with those three things. It did not talk about the hard cost. So I'd like to note for sure that bond council has opined that we cannot use Article One to, to pay for the hard cost of those three things. That's number one.
Mr. Purple, would you work on that, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, that's actually number one, number three. Number two, um... So this is probably a little bit out of the purview, but quickly. Um, I just wanna remind the board selectmen that a year and a half ago, advisory formed a committee to basically take a look at the next 30 years of capital projects, and we worked very hard on this. John Butler and I came before you and basically said, "We think that we can do this. We think we've got $40 million we can spend over the next 30 years." We polled every single committee in this town department and basically got the wish list. Um, we presented this report to you. We said, "Police, fire, library, senior community center." So I just wanna remind everybody tonight, as we start talking about spending more and more money, that $27 million is a big chunk of the 40. We used 20 in that projection. We also weren't told about this laundry list of things that the Recreation, Recreation Committee has now done. We asked them point blank, "What do you wanna do?", and we were told they wanted to do a combined senior community center, which appears to not be the case now. But we only put $40 million in this project. Um, we also got it in front of town meeting, special town meeting on March 8th, and told the town the exact same thing, that we think we can afford this project, um, based on the work that we did, and the work we did basically used $40 million in that, in that analysis. Um, and we've always spent, we're gonna spend $27 million in total. Um, if Recreation, all those projects come, that's 12, so there it goes, with no library, no, no senior center. Um, so I just wanted to remind everybody of that work that we did, so it's not forgotten. You can go back and look at the March 8th, um, town meeting, and you'll see what we said, but we've told the town that. And I want to make sure that we, we basically follow through on the things that we have told this town and not forget it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any other members? Mr. Peters, or, sir?
Mr. Chairman Adrian Peters, Chair, Advisory, 11 Ledch Hill. Um, we are, we are as a team attending the meeting tonight to be informed the same as you are. And, um, I would leave it to any of the members, the same as what you did, um, based, based on what was introduced to us to join, um, that if any one of my, the members on the team have a question the same as yours, they can ask it, but specifically to the Public Safety Building. Um, on my side, I actually, uh, I would leave it to them. I, myself, basically have one question, and that is that when we look at the figures and the comparisons, whether we, when we, uh, look at it now, whether we're comparing apples with apples in all aspects, not just the building and the 1.4, um, the list that they made up, if there are any variances to what we originally had, uh, if we could just point that out, not just the financial side, if they were. That's my only question. Otherwise, I would ask everyone on the advisory, if they have a specific question, please come forward.
Thank you, sir. Jason, can you, you wanna answer that one, sir?
There have been, uh, there's actually been a reduction to the square footage, not a material amount. I believe it's in the area of somewhere between 500 and 1,000 square feet. That is the only change, um, that we were made aware of during this whole 10-week process. So the drawing, if you were to take the drawing that was on the town meeting screen and compare it to where we stand today, it's substantially the same, except for we now have located where that potential golf course clubhouse could go.
Thank you, sir. Um, Mr. Rooney?
Uh, John Rooney, Edgewood Road. I'm a member of the Public Safety Building Committee, but, and I'm also that committee's liaison to the Golf Course Committee. And I think what Ms. Cook said really needs to be flushed out by this board. This board is the chief executives of the town, needs to decide, I suspect, in consultation with the treasurer and bond council, what is included in Article One. Because as you will recall, the proponents of Article One, in particular me, at town meeting when I stood, when I got up and spoke, Article One passed based upon a collaboration of efforts by Open Space, by the Golf Course Committee, by the Lattice Squamar Road residents in part. And part of the Article One's passing was the understanding that the golf course was going to continue in its operation. And therefore, I don't think you can view these costs separately, somewhat different. I, I have tremendous respect for Jason. He runs a tremendous meeting. He puts in so much time on this, but respectfully, I think that the costs associated with moving the clubhouse and the foundation associated there, too, that $300,000, should in fact come within the purview of Article One, because if it doesn't, the Golf Course Committee has no money. Um, the, the, the foundation needs to be built, obviously, before that building is moved. The foundation building for that clubhouse is one of the, if not the, first items for construction in the spring. Um, so I, I think it's important to remain, to remain true and honest and fair to the representations that we made at town meeting, that, yes, we're building a public safety facility. Town absolutely needs one, but at the same time, we promise to keep the golf course operational, and we promised the Lattice Squamar Road residents a lot of things that caused them to vote in support of this. And meeting with both the, uh, Public Safety Building Committee and the Golf Course Committee, it is absolutely essential, and I think it's in your laps. I don't think that this can be transferred for another decision-making body. I think it's in your laps to determine what costs come within Article One in relationship to the golf course. Now, clearly, the relocation of the first tee and the ninth, uh, ninth green, that's clear. That does not come within the, uh, purview of Article One. But costs incidental to the building of the facility requires the removal of that clubhouse, and it's construction someplace there, someplace, uh, on that same site. So my position, although I'm a member of the golf, uh, the Public Safety Building Committee and should just be focusing only on building the best facility, which I am, at the same time, I'm somewhat conflicted, because we can't view these things separately. They need to be viewed together, and to the extent that the decision is that the Golf Course Committee and the golf course are on its own in terms of building this foundation, in terms of this $300,000 deficit, that's gonna be a problem. It's gonna be a problem about the continued operation of the golf course. And once that golf course is shut down, even for a, a short time period, we've been told they're gonna lose members. And once you start losing members, it's the death knell of the golf course. So I do think it's an important decision. It's one that your board needs to make, and it's one that your board needs to make sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rooney. Incredibly well stated. I would like to know from Mr. Ballantyne, do you have a comment on that tonight you can give?
Good evening. Um, no, real quick. Well, we, we can obviously get together with bond council quickly and get a little more detailed, um, inquiry into them, and I, I think we can settle this pretty quick, one way or another. Um, the issue of the old loan order, I, I don't see what that has to do with this situation at all. Two different situations. Uh, that, that's, that's a whole different thing. Um, but we can, um, we can certainly determine what, more specifically, we need to do with that structure and moving it, and, um, um, and determine if it does fall into Article One. It may. So I, I won't say it will or will not tonight, but we'll find out quick.
All right, as soon as you have an answer, would you ensure that it's through Mr. Purple, it's shared with this board, as well as Mr. Malinowski, Mr. Pelletki, and, and Mr. Peters?
Oh, we'll spread quick, yes.
Good. Thank you. All right, other questions for Mr. Malinowski?
Dorian Chisinski, Presidential Drive. I have a very different recollection of how the golf course was supposed to be managed, so I'm not sure I'm remembering correctly, but I thought, my belief was the management team who is handling the golf course right now was supposed to be picking up some of these costs, and that's why those costs were not included in the warrant article? So is there any way of checking how it was presented to us at town meeting? Or can we go somewhere to find out exactly? My understanding is the, the management team that was handling the golf course and is running it was supposed to be picking up some of these costs. That was my understanding. So I'm, I'm shocked that we're looking at cost of a foundation and adding all this stuff to the public safety cost, because my understanding was that was totally separate, and that the management team was handling that. So is there any way of checking that?
Mr. Purple?
'Cause that's a huge concern.
So the management company is responsible for the day-to-day operations of the course, but any capital improvements, um, I believe in the existing contract that, um, that the management company had with St. Mark's, um, there was a, a minor piece in there that they would put a few thousand dollars each year towards capital improvements, nothing significant. Um, any capital, uh, any capital costs are gonna be borne by the owner of the property.
Okay, 'cause I thought we weren't gonna charge them the, like, the $35,000 they were paying St. Mark's to help offset some of the costs. I'm just, I'm just asking, is there any way we can go back and check to see how we were gonna manage this?
Yeah, I don't remember that, but we, there was, it was videotaped. Um, so it definitely can be viewed. I don't know if there's anyone here who has a vivid recollection. Mr. Rooney, do you?
Yeah, I, I think Mr. Chisinski is absolutely correct. In terms of the numbers that were discussed at town meeting, the numbers were Jason's numbers, which talked exclusively about building the Public Safety Building. Uh, that's what the numbers were. That's what the ask was. But I would suggest the ask was also to keep the golf course operational. That was part of the article, which I, I would, I would suggest that in order to achieve that objective, we have to come up with some money for the foundation. That's, but you're right, the numbers are the numbers for the Public Safety Building. The question is, we can't forget about the golf course.
Right, and I think the, the clear intent of everyone, uh, on, on, that was on the board that night, if I recall correctly, was, it was clearly intent to ensure, you know, uninterrupted, as best as possible, operation of that golf course. Is it others' recollection? Is it, that was clearly mine from that night.
And I agree with that. We were supposed to keep it operational, but.
And I, I don't recall any discussion on, uh, what cost estimates of what it would be to move the clubhouse and, and to rebuild, and, and I don't recall any of that, that particular night, so. Uh, but it's clearly something that Brian's gonna look into, and hopefully we'll have an answer in short order. I, I, I agree. It's something that has to be done, Mr. Rooney, in parallel, um, because, you know, one is being done with the other at this, at virtually the same time. All right, uh, other thoughts or questions for Mr. Malinowski? Mr. Pelletki?
Just maybe a little clarification on to Lou Pelletki, Golf Committee. Uh, the new RFP for the golf course does ask that the management company take care of the temporary facilities for the tee and the ninth green. So they're, they're gonna absorb that cost as their, as part of their, uh, as part of their contract over the next couple of years. So that, that is gonna happen. Um, I, I don't wanna scare the committee, but there's a transient period here as well, where while the clubhouse is moving, then we have to provide a facility. and parking area that has to be carved out of what's in the golf course. The, the golf course architect has identified areas for these places and has worked diligently with Jason's architect, with great cooperation from that committee, to find these locations and basically position everything as, in a minimal impact way that we possibly can. But we can expect, again, some unbudgeted expenses for the transitory period, and then probably in the form of a warrant to restore the golf course to an operational condition where the ninth green and the first tee end up in their final locations. And again, the architect is developing a plan probably for early in 18, where we'll have an idea where that has, has landed. Again, we understand the sensitivity about costs. We're trying to minimize the changes and make as, just the lightest touch possible to make the golf course go forward. And I appreciate the cooperation of all the committees, really, in making this happen.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Pilecki.
Can I just ask, while you're up there? When is your next meeting?
The next meeting should be next Monday. We, we lost quorum last Thursday. We would have had a meeting then, and I'm planning on next Monday.
And I don't know if anybody else on this board agrees, but I think like a joint meeting between the two, just to really hash out how much money is going to be needed for what, going through the transition and keeping it going, so we have a, a full understanding of everything and how it's going to be paid for? From the clubhouse, to the holes, to the maintenance, to the contract.
Yeah, to the extent that the chairs want to establish, do a joint meeting at some point, I think it's a great idea. I mean, I remember when we established the committee, we, in that, we talked about the collaboration between the two that was going to be needed. I think it's going on, but in, in terms of, you know, for the public benefit, too, to be able to go to one meeting and hear, you know, what those cost estimates might be in the, in the path forward to ensure as best, you know, uninterrupted act, operations of the golf course as possible, I think it's a great idea.
I'd point out that the estimates from the Golf Course Committee would be fairly rough, because we don't have a lot of professional help. So, I mean, we can certainly list the types of things we think are going to be needed to, at the minimum, to get through the transitional period and beyond. But like the building committee, we'd have to go out and get full estimates to have accurate costs, in particular for whatever reconstruction of the golf course is going to happen downstream. But that, that can be put aside from just getting through this next two-year period. But absolutely, a joint, a joint meeting would make sense.
I, I think I more, too, want to have an understanding of the projected business model of the golf course going forward.
Yep.
And other funding sources, whether it's the management company or, or other private entities that are being explored, things like that.
Sure. Absolutely. And it is on the committee's agenda for a little bit later, after we get through this, this period and, and get out of the way of the golf course.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Pilecki. Mr. Peters?
Mr. Chairman, regarding the golf course working group, we have met, attended a meeting, I can't remember, one or two. We did talk about it, and we would like as well, because of the budgets we're busy with and the capital planning, that we have this as soon as possible, a scope of where it's going. We would like to have it in writing before a meeting, you know, so that we can prepare, so that we have something that we can put our arms around. Their request from us is and still stay, and I did communicate it with the chair, that we would like to see all costs, and that we would not be able to, I don't think we should or could move to a town meeting regarding golf course with open spaces within the finances. In other words, it would mean all capital improvement, the operating cost that is foreseen, and what that entails, and for a golf course like this. When we have somebody else coming in to take a contract, you know, to take a contract to manage it, the town still stays with the risk that they can walk away, it may not be financially viable, how is this going to work? At the end of the day, the town has the golf course. And I think, like any other business, there's a risk involved as well, that the town should be aware of. And so I think it's just our request from advisory is that it's a total picture, we want to see all the figures if it's possible, even if it's a scoping, that we have a ballpark to work with, but it needs to include all factors, including what such a nine-hole golf course like this, with water, et cetera, would cost to operate, and whether that makes sense when a contractor comes in and what the risk is to the town. I think they should know. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Sir?
Tim Lit, 148 Woodland Road. There seem to be various recollections of, you know, what led up to the Public Safety Building, and I have very clear set, having attended, you know, the meetings that were presented to the public and a number of the committee meetings and hearings and all that as we were getting into this. And every time that someone got up, what was said was that the budget estimates developed by the Building Committee were solely for the Public Safety Building, did not include anything for the golf course, other than the placeholder for demolishing that current structure, and that people should expect that the golf course, be it committee or whatever, would be coming back to town meeting with the supplemental budget, saying, this is what it will cost in order to meet that part of, of the commitment. Now, I agree with Mr. Rooney that, as presented, the idea was that, yes, we keep the golf course going and efforts would be made, but the footnote was always that there would be a supplemental cost to doing that that was not included in the Public Safety Building stuff. I don't have a particular dog in this fight, but I'm a little concerned when I start seeing the Public Safety Building funds being viewed as a place to go for this other stuff. I don't think that was, what was presented to the public, I don't think that's in the interest of the Public Safety Building. I also agree that a lot of time has elapsed and, and some kind of timely financing plan needs to be put together to figure out, so how is the extra $300,000 or half a million or whatever it actually, you know, ends up becoming, is going to be funded and where? And if that means, you know, a special town meeting or a different approach, and I certainly agree with Mr. Peters, that the golf course deserves a business model, and maybe, you know, you say, well, there's a bond and some of it's funded that way. No matter how that works, it's not the Public Safety Building Fund is the piggy bank for making good on the commitment. The commitment was, we'll come back, we, I mean, the golf people would, would come back and say, okay, we need, in order to finish this, which was not included in the estimate, we said we'd come back, we're coming back, here's what it costs, here's how we propose to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Lit. Mr. Rooney?
Just one last thing, if I may. I don't think there's any dispute that the numbers presented at town meeting were the numbers for the Public Safety Building, but don't anyone kid themselves. Article One would not have passed but for the support of the Open Space Commission, Ms. Gillespie, of the Golf Course Committee at that time, led by Mr. Wilson, Andre Fortin, Dick Cruciani, and David Perry, and the Lattice Squamar Road residents, to a certain extent. They're obviously not overwhelmingly in support of it, but we made representations that we were going to protect their view, their scenic beauty of their homes, by continuing the operation of the golf course under the conservation restrictions. So yes, the money was allocated specifically for the Public Safety Building, but there would not have been any money allocated but for the, you know, the concomitant, or corollary project of keeping the golf course open. That's what I'm saying.
But I don't agree, I don't disagree with Mr. Lit. I agree.
I don't disagree with you either. It's just a question of, how do you pay for it?
Yep. Oh, yeah, that's fair. So, and I think Mr. Mr. Ballantyne is going to be working with Mr. Purple and others to get us that answer. So any final questions for Mr. Malinowski before we move on to our next topic?
May I ask one final question? Mr. Malinowski, just so I can be clear, the, we keep hearing about the $300,000 number, that's to move the current clubhouse and construct the foundation?
So to move that clubhouse itself?
Yep.
That is covered under Article One?
Yes.
There's definitive email that Mr. Purple read at our meeting last night that says that. That is approximately $30,000, which would have been the same cost to demolish it. That's my understanding of why it was approved. The remaining $300,000 that I'm referencing is foundations, reconstruction of the porch that would have to be demolished, hooking it up to septic, hooking it up to electric, water, et cetera, plus a retaining wall at the rear of the site to allow us to build a parking lot out back, so that also includes the cost of a gravel parking lot.
Okay, thank you. So just to be clear, it's not just for the foundation?
It'd be an expensive foundation for...
I was going to say, but just, just so people are clear, it's for a variety of things that would need to happen.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Malinowski.
Thank you.
Okay. So we're going to move on to our next item. We're going to have a discussion of the impact of the 5G telecommunications expansion. Mr. Purple? I believe we're going to, Ms. Davis is going to join us.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So if you would give just a second, so I get the presentation set up. Ms. Davis is here this evening. We've had several conversations. I know she's talked with several other town officials about this topic. I, I found her very engaging, very informative, and, and I think, excuse me, yeah, and everybody, yeah.
It's all on TV, so viewing public at home is, and we are looking forward to it.
And I think that, you know, again, very informative for the board, just to have an understanding a little bit more of this issue, given the fact that there will be ongoing negotiations coming up the next several years with a lot of the, the cable providers. I do want to also point out that there was a letter that came to the board today from Cecilia Doucette, and Ms. Doucette is, I had that right here. She works for the Ashland Education Foundation. She's also Ashland School District's grant coordinator. She's been involved in this issue. She sent some of the same information that I think that, that Ms. Davis, you know, will, will speak about tonight in terms of some of the legislation at the state level and things of that, and that nature. So if you give me one second and get her set up.
Sure. And Ms. Davis, come on up, please, and welcome. Thank you for your patience.
This isn't a fun topic either. That's fine. Yeah, that's fine. Since it's, you know, gotten late, I'm sure you have other things, so we can go through it pretty quickly.
It's almost on the page.
Yeah. I have it, hard copy.
Yeah, they all have, and they all have hard copies, too.
Do you want to just do that?
Why don't we do that?
Okay.
All right, welcome.
Thank you. So I know some of you, but not all of you, and thank you for taking the time to hear this concern, based on the merits, and thanks, Mark, for facilitating this. So you probably have had a chance to look at the packet and maybe have lots of questions, maybe have some data that I haven't seen to share, but first, I want to say at the outset that I'm not an expert. I'm a concerned citizen, and I'm very pro-technology and its enormous benefits. However, I do not believe uncontrolled wireless technology is prudent, giving the risks to zoning authority and public safety. So we'll go through briefly, but as a non-expert, I'll try to answer any questions or bring forward others who are more capable. Tonight's discussion is intended to begin to look at the possible impacts and risks associated with the coming antenna streamlining applications. And I hope that this board will see this as an emerging matter, like other cities and towns have, and one warranting serious attention. So lastly, before we start, I'll say there are many possible solutions that should be considered, which ensure the town has access to future-proof technological advances and infrastructure investment that don't come with the serious emerging risks to its zoning authority and the public safety of its citizens. That's a mouthful. So what is 5G and DAS, and what does it look like? You can see in the photos on the first slide, I think I missed the cover, okay. The slim-style monopole, which necessitates a equipment box, the photo on the left, and the fat-style monopole. You probably have heard of 5G and what it would be used for. These antennas are also known as distributed antenna systems, or DAS, and it's available via newly licensed spectrum approved for commercial use to support the Internet of Things primarily. This infrastructure will use millimeter-wave pulsed, non-ionizing radiation in the range of between 6 and 100 gigahertz. And it's also referred to as extremely high-frequency, or EHF, range radiation. So the industry is touting this as the latest and greatest to come down the pike, but what will happen if it isn't future-proof, or it fails, or becomes obsolete, that's a consideration for all of us, I think. So, so the current approach, going back to the picture, for the 5G wireless Internet structures will require one 30-foot tower for every 12 homes, so in residential areas, it's a pretty big impact. So we all think the Internet of Things is great and technology is wonderful when it's controlled, so what's the problem? Obviously, my concerns are echoed by many other cities and towns. The streamlining process seeks to bypass local zoning authority, which would strip the town of its right to regulate tower sightings. So to residents, this means unsightly, obtrusive 5G small-cell towers, which will negatively impact public safety property values, and it is not intended to improve cellphone service reception. And you can probably see from the information that I shared, there's growing opposition nationally to streamlining. Municipalities and towns across the US have strongly asserted their rights to keep control of local zoning and rights of way. You can see the quote from Florida League of Cities, representative there, and recently in California, Governor Brown vetoed the small-cell bill due to the opposition there. And the League of Minnesota Cities wrote a memo on small cells as well, which outlines some of the concerns and some of the steps you can take to protect your zoning authority in the town. Going on to the next slide, the public safety impact, you can obviously read, all of you, so I won't go through this in great detail, but there are studies finding that 5G frequencies have a biological effect, namely, the National Toxicology Program study recently in 2016 found that wireless radiation causes cancer and DNA damage in rodents. And incidentally, these are the same types of tumors found in people after 10 years of use, so it's pretty concerning. And scientists worldwide are calling for a halt to the 5G rollout. You can read several of the links, if you can take the time at some point to do that. The other public safety concern is that, in addition, the cumulative daily radiation exposure poses serious public health risk, and most people are unaware that wireless technology was never tested for long-term safety, and that children are more vulnerable, and the accumulated scientific evidence shows harm. So, you know, the health impacts, I think, are a discussion for a different meeting altogether. So I think that touches on it, and there's quite a bit more information, if you care to see it. But just one more important piece, I think, is to understand that for a subset of the population, wireless electromagnetic radiation can trigger a disability. And you can see the US Access Board, the Department of Labor, the World Health Organization, and other countries, the Austrian Medical Association, actually, society, has guidelines to diagnose the condition called electrohypersensitivity, that some people suffer from when they're exposed for long periods of time or from a chronic exposure. So those are all things, again, that are a topic of another discussion. I think for the town, it's important to know that there's a potential impact on property values and resulting in lost tax revenue as well. And you can see that some states already have data showing that there is, you know, this effect from towers, and these are no different. So one study in the publication Land Economics found that home values will diminish by an average of 7.5% if they're within 4,500... within 4,500 feet of any newly constructed cell tower. So I think that the takeaway from this slide is that approving applications without due diligence and potentially tightening bylaws could potentially result in millions of lost tax revenue for the town, and the impact should be studied and assessed as part of a fully transparent due process procedure before any of these telecoms, you know, are approved. Mark would be the first person, and that's why I approached him first, when I was concerned about this issue. And so some of the solutions, I think, would be to look at what other municipalities are doing to tighten their bylaws. There is the ability to do that. There are things that can be done, and to responsibly implement new technologies. And some of the, on the last slide, or second to last slide here, potential solutions for consideration continued. I talk seriously about amending the telecommunications bylaws for the town to prioritize public safety in residential areas, school districts, playgrounds, and recreation spaces, historic spaces, et cetera, where it's feasible to do so. So I would ask that this is seriously looked at. There are common misperceptions, which I think people assume that this is preempted, that we can't dispute locations for tower sightings. That's not true. As you can see, the Telecommunications Act itself has a savings clause, and I've cited it here, that you can see in the highlight. I don't know how small your copy is. Mine is extremely small, because it has my speaking notes, but, and then I found out through this process that Massachusetts is a certified reverse preemption state, which is interesting, and that comes from the CTIA's documentation. So that, you know, allows the town or state to have the right to preempt and control their zoning authority. Some of the things that are happening in Massachusetts, as you can see, and Mr. Purple alluded to earlier, there's a lot being done in Massachusetts in terms of potential bills that are in the legislature now. And obviously, there's broad concern. There are many different things relating to smart meter exposure, wireless in schools, best practices, all kinds of medical awareness for electro-sensitivity or environmental intolerance. So there's broad concern over various sources in today's environment, and this is evidenced by the bills. So I urge you to dig deeply into this matter and be prepared as soon as the town is inundated with antenna applications for streamlining. And I'm still learning about the process myself, so I am concerned that this is, you know, evidently coming down the pike, as they say in Massachusetts. So I appreciate you listening to it. I think there are some things for further consideration that I've attached at the end, and I'm sure you probably have questions. Some of them I may not be able to answer, or certainly be in touch if you would like to discuss this further, or could direct me to the right committee.
Well, thank you, Ms. Davis, for bringing this to the board's attention and to the attention of the town. As you know, it is being videotaped, so that was an excellent presentation. I thank you. And I note that in the, some of the things you've identified that Massachusetts is doing, you've, you know, you have in here a bill that looks like it was proposed, a House bill by Representative Carolyn Diakoma.
Right.
You know, a consistently solid voice and advocate for the residents of the Town of Southborough, so it can strongly suggest continuing to work with her as well. Have you gone, have you been in front of the planning board members?
I haven't. At this point, I think Mark has stated he hasn't seen applications hit his desk yet. I know that some of this is being tested in Seaport District. You know, I haven't been able to determine how much has been approved in Massachusetts, but again, it's, it's, you know, there's quite an uproar in California and other states, but let's face it, this is gonna be very lucrative for the town, as is all telecommunications infrastructure. And we need to understand the risks and, you know, propose them to the residents, to see if everybody is okay with this risk. I think there's liability, as I alluded to. I didn't touch on that slide. You can certainly look at some of the links. But I think the, I started with you folks, because I think the Board of Selectmen understand that you have a duty of care to protect citizens and understand the risks. If this is so evident, and there's so much data on this, we really need to proceed with caution. And I think, you know, some of the recent precedents and lawsuits, unfortunately, that are happening in New York particularly, and Maryland, I believe, Long Island, there's all sorts of litigation popping up, and it's concerning. But, you know, recently, in a local case, there was precedent set that the FCC guidelines, that we all think are so protective, are not. They have not considered biological effects like, such as those that cause electrohypersensitivity and other disabilities, and cancers down the road. I mean, it's a long latency for cancer. We, you know, we all don't want to talk about that, but, you know, there's data in several registries that show the same types of tumors are appearing. And again, it's the health impacts, and while you can't oppose technically a sighting based on health impacts, that is changing. And again, Massachusetts has the right to protect their rights of way and tighten bylaws, which would be my suggestion, so.
Yes, I think bringing this to the attention of the planning board would be key. You know, this board has heard lots of discussion about poles in the last number of months, and on your slide that talks about this would require one 30-foot tower, or pole, for every 12 homes, I think would be of significant interest for a number of members of the town. So again, I appreciate you bringing this to our attention. I'm sure there's more to come. Are there questions for Ms. Davis, Ms. Fanna?
I support you going to the planning board. I think it's a cooperative effort with the planning board and the Board of Health, similar to other issues that we've had in town. If they work together, I think jointly, whatever the amendment might be, might be more successful at a town meeting, because the Health Department, Planning Board, could define their concerns and interest in it and support it. But I would start with the Board of Health and the Planning Board.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments for Ms. Davis?
I'm sorry. Just one, I wanted to thank you for bringing this forward. I think I personally wasn't aware of this until I got your information, and I find it a little concerning, so I think this is great. It gives us the opportunity to be a little bit proactive and to look into things before there possibly is an application that comes into the town that we're limited by, so.
So it is a good time. I agree. It's, you know, and I think Mark agrees, and that's why he's facilitated this discussion.
So I just, on behalf of the board, I know we all thank you for bringing this to our attention and taking the time to put this together, and I would just suggest, Mr. Purple, if we could get this put on the website, so any interested citizens might be able to access some of the data that's referenced in here.
Sure, absolutely.
I'll get you the copy without the typos.
I didn't notice the typo.
There were a couple.
But thank you.
Mark gave me five minutes to put it together, so.
I will, I will, I will say that, you know, that Ms. Davis is extremely vigilant when it comes to our agenda, so when we have a poll hearing that pops up, I get an email that says, "Are they doing anything with 5G?" And to be honest with you, you know, you can laugh, and I bring it up because it's kind of humorous, but to that point, now when we get a poll application in, you know, I have Lori, you know, find out exactly what they're doing and why. So, you know, it may seem humorous, but it's, we don't know what questions we should be asking in some of these instances, and having that information and being armed a little bit with it allows you to, you know, to ask that question.
It's accelerating. I mean, it's just the pace of this technology moving forward by design is very accelerating.
Sure, and I think there's safety concerns for many residents about what is going on with wireless. Who really knows what's coming in and out of, you know, when we're talking on a mobile phone.
And there are lots of things that can be done to mitigate, right? So that's where there can be some discussion, because of course, this technology is enormously beneficial, but we don't want to put something in that's potentially gonna be obsolete very soon, and 5G has its challenges.
Yeah. And, you know, so the safety issue clearly is a concern that needs to be addressed, the aesthetics, which I talked about a little bit. Most, many may not know that this flagpole that we have right outside of Town Hall here is not a flag, well, it's being used as a flagpole, but it's an antenna.
Yeah.
And years ago, years ago, I was, when I was fairly new to the board, was it Verizon that came forward? I don't know, you weren't even on the board.
AT&amp;T.
AT&amp;T, maybe you were.
I know that. No, I wasn't here, but I know that.
And, but they were looking to put in, to replace this antenna with some massive, huge, round, and, you know, veterans came out, and anyway, it never happened. So there's two components to it. So, Mr. Shea, you had a question or comment as well?
Just one comment. They had sent along an email to Mr. Purple earlier today that, you know, I think to strengthen numbers, so one of the agencies that could assist potentially is the Mass Municipal Association, if there are other cities and towns that have come up with an approach to this issue, that, you know, rather than invent the wheel, you know, if there are other communities that we can call upon for, you know, for guidance.
And I haven't, yeah, and I haven't done that yet, but I'll reach out to John Robertson at MMA tomorrow. He handles a lot of the legislative issues, and he can at least give me some guidance as to whether, A, has MMA taken a position on this yet?
Yeah.
And they take positions on most issues, and B, are there other communities that he's aware of, or at least can put his feelers out to see what people may have done with some of those zoning bylaws to address some of these issues and make sure that, you know, local controls are changed?
Yeah, locally, I don't have that information, because I think it's still becoming an awareness here. But several of the citations and links that I've given on that page go to, directly to how particular, I don't know the number of the slide, but it's potential solutions for consideration continued, where the city of Calabasas, Spokane, San Francisco, Rancho Palabres, of course, North Town, North Hampton Township, those areas are not local, but those are important discussions to read through those links, and, you know, the proper people would be the planning board and Board of Health, is what you're saying.
And the Department of Public Health.
Yeah.
State agency also.
Been in touch with them. They have been issuing guidelines for quite some time, so it's a politically difficult thing. You know, it's evident that the FCC guidelines are guidelines, and that they're set so high, and they're not protective of all effects. So I think, you know, we're all becoming aware of this issue, and thank you for-
But a follow-up. If you do meet with the Board of Health in town?
Yes.
My expectation is that they would write a comment
Okay.
on if they had a position one way or the other, because it would help give us guidance, and maybe the planning board.
Because any zoning change is gonna, is gonna have to originate with planning.
Right, yes.
So.
Okay. Thank you for your help with the process.
Okay, Mr. Litt?
I guess it's my evening. Tim Litt, 148 Woodland Road, a couple of things that I should say. And first, I understand, you know, why these kinds of things get surfaced, and I also note the disclaimer that you've said you're not an expert, you've just gathered data. So first, one of these days, we will have a technology committee. This is a good thing to refer to it, when we can get it going. Second thing is that we shouldn't, there's a history of a lot of concern being raised about these kinds of things, whether it's living under a power line, whether it's Wi-Fi. You may remember that there was a St. Mark's lawsuit in the news in the past couple of years, where someone claimed that a student was affected by Wi-Fi radiation. This went to court. It was dismissed as not being based in scientific fact. With everything new, issues will be raised, but I think it's important to hear from experts. I think it's important to make sure that data is, that decisions are made based on data in peer-reviewed journals. I am not an expert in this particular area of technology, but I do read, you know, the general journals, and I know that there have been many peer-reviewed studies about the effects of radiation on people. And I think you want to be careful about stating that this is a health issue, or this is a problem. I understand that some people have raised concerns. I understand that there are lawsuits out there. Not all lawsuits succeed, and not all concerns are well-founded. I think it's important that people who consider these issues bring in the people who are the experts, who do look at the hard data, and that we not react to concerns that may not be backed up by the scientific and engineering evidence.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Litt.
So if I could just make a comment about that, I think that the case that you're referring to, the decision is quite different. I think it's still ongoing, and I think the decision stated that general causation is, was found. So I think that, I'm not sure about that, but, and I think, you know, I understand your point of view. I think there's quite a bit of data on both sides, but I think that the decision should be helpful for you to review potentially.
Yeah, and I, no, I appreciate that. And, Mr. Shiffrin?
Yeah, I think, I mean, my takeaway from this is that, and I thank you again for bringing the presentation, the issue is new to others up here and new to me, when this was put on the agenda in the other letter that we got today. So my takeaway is not the analyzing the risk versus benefit now, but just making sure that we have whatever bylaws in place, that when the issues come up, if we do find that it's a problem, we have the ability to control it as much as we can.
Yeah, I mean, information is power, right? Many of the board members had no idea. We didn't have this data before Ms. Davis took the time to produce it, worked through Mr. Purple, come before us, you know, and, you know, there is always that analysis of this data versus, okay, someone else. In anything in government, you're gonna have two sides, and who's got the strongest argument, and, you know, but it's not helpful to just have the one side, so, you know, before tonight and before your work, we wouldn't have had this, so.
And I think that the health effects are a conversation for another discussion, because I haven't had the ability to share that, and I don't think this is the proper venue, so.
Now, I thank you on behalf of the entire board. If I'm reading correctly-
Absolutely.
-we are very appreciative and very thankful that you've taken the time to do all of this, and inform us and inform the public, and I think this conversation will continue. So thank you, Ms. Davis.
Thanks, thank you.
If I might, one other thing I wanted to say.
If it's something new.
On this, on this topic.
Okay.
In terms of putting this document, or any other document, on the town website, I think it's important to make sure that it's identified in terms of, you know, what the source is, and that the town is not taking a position on it one way or the other.
Yeah, no, it's information for everyone, so.
I mean, there have been other cases where, for example, in the case of citizens petitions, there were requests made to put the positions of the proponents of those articles, you know, on the town website, and they were denied on the grounds that this would have the appearance that the town was taking a position.
No, this is actually already, thank you, Ms. Davis, this is actually already, since it's part of our packet, it's already in public information, so. Thank you, Ms. Davis, that was excellent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Litt. Mr. Perrin?
So as John is coming to, sorry.
So as John is coming to the mic, I just want to preface this, you know, a lot of times, you know, other than Police Chief, Fire Chief, and Karen Galligan, who we can't seem to get to stay away from our meetings, we don't, we don't see a lot of the department heads, except when there's a crisis or a problem, or, you know, we don't always get to talk, you know, about some of the good things. And, you know, John's had, you know, a number of projects ongoing that I thought it'd be good to have the board updated on. One of them, you drove over tonight on your way in, but it was a little smoother than it, than it has been. So I just wanted, John, just to kind of give the board an update and give you an opportunity, you know, to ask any questions and that, on some of the things that have been occupying his time lately. So, John.
All right, so tonight, we basically want to talk about three pretty good-sized projects facilities we've been working on for the last few months. First one is gonna be the Sub Six system of the Town Hall, and also the Youth and Family Service buildout down at South Union Building, and finally, the weatherization of seven buildings under the green community funding that we achieved this year. First one being the Town Hall Sub Six system. So happy to tell you, the system is in and running. Currently, DPW is working on patching up the trench that basically covers the- is working on patching up the trench that basically covers the discharge pipes from the holding tanks and the pump chamber out to the leach field. Um, we are going to, at this point, the leach field is gonna have to remain gravel throughout the winter months. The rest of it will be patched up until we can have Karen repave the entire parking lot in the spring. Um, we are going to absorb the cost of the patching through the capital maintenance article, along with the system costs and the engineering costs, and I will, of course, be going for a reserve fund transfer at some point this year. As you can imagine, this was an unexpected expense. It is quite substantial. Um, took maybe a week longer than we expected, and of course, it causes some headaches along the way. There's no way around it in a project like this. You're always gonna get a few headaches. Um, we did our best to try to straighten them out as we went along, and you really, it appears you ended up with a very good product in the end. I was talking to Board of Health, and the system is a nice system. So, overall, that, that one, it's up and running.
Stay within the budget cost or the, the bid cost?
Uh, right now, we have engineering costs of twenty-five hundred and fifty dollars. The septic system itself was seventy thousand dollars. That's a contract you signed. I asked Karen for a guesstimate on the patchwork. We don't have it yet, but I would say, I'd say we'd be safe to say total soup to nuts, about eighty thousand dollars. And by keeping the patchwork in-house, we got around some administrative costs we would've been faced with by farming it out. We got around product markups, and we got around prevailing rates for installation. So, I think overall, it's really the best route we could've went in this case. Um, next product on the agenda, South Union Build-Out.
Before we go further, I just have a question. You said that the back part of the driveway is gonna be gravel till spring?
The field, yep.
Where the equipment is sitting now, right?
Where the equipment is sitting, yep.
Is that taking parking from our neighbor?
Uh, Karen sent out a notice today to town hall that you can still park, you can still park on it, like you would a gravel driveway at home. You absolutely can still use it.
So, everything will be out of there?
Oh, yes, yeah.
Week because of service?
Contractor doesn't get paid until equipment is removed.
Okay, thank you.
Um, any more questions on that one? Um, we're gonna go to the youth and family service build-out down at South Union. Um, coming out very well, actually. Uh, what we have done is we have taken the old conference room that was next door to Doreen's office, and that is becoming a room for the interns, waiting area, and, you know, they have a lot of toys for the children that are waiting for counseling, that gives them a place for privacy away from the public eyes to wait. Um, and the big classroom that's located down the opposite of the end of the building from recreation, that has been turned into two offices for Sarah Cassels and, um, for Sarah, no, Sarah and Megan, thank you very much, uh, for Megan to provide their counseling services in, and there's a little small office down at the end for administration for them. Um, the project itself, as I said, is coming out very well. We are doing sound deadening between the walls for privacy and for the upstairs vibrations from any activities going on upstairs. Um, we have re-sheet rocked, steel-studded, uh, fire blocking, um, gonna be carpeted, painted. It's gonna be basically looking like brand-new offices. And I think that building, we are going to have it for a while by looks of it, so I think it's time we start making proper use of it, and this is the right path to go down to do that. So, overall, I think you'll be very pleased with the product. I know Sarah and her staff seem pretty excited about it, so that's a good thing. I like when we have someone that's excited about a move. Um.
Occupancy?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, sorry. Uh, shooting for the very beginning of the year. We probably could try to move them a little bit sooner, but we don't really want to disrupt their, their Christmas toy drive they do. So, that's pretty important that we let them stay their course. It gives us time to finish up and make a smooth transition for everyone.
John, is that within the timeframe that you were hoping to get them there?
Actually, pretty much landing right on the spot of what we were hoping for, actually.
Thank you. Signage for their office relocation?
We can easily take care of that. We'll just order one. We usually do a Pillsbury. They have the original signs there, so it could be added to it.
We'll do a flash that they've relocated when they actually move.
Yep, and we can actually talk to...
For the citizens.
Yep, we can talk to Tom and IT as well, make sure it's on the website as well.
Thank you.
Um, any other questions on that one? Uh, and finally, another pretty exciting one, for me at least. I know it's probably not as exciting for you. Um, we are looking to start, um, building envelope sealing projects on seven properties, uh, through the green community funding that we achieved this year. Those properties are gonna be the DPW, both transfer stations buildings, the old and the new, uh, library, town hall, South Union, and the cemetery building. These projects are, includes weather sealing, insulation, and, um, some, sorry, gap sealing as well. Uh, total annual savings just by doing this is going to be over five thousand dollars per projection. That's every single year. And that may not seem like a lot, but now you have to take into consideration, when the next round of green communities funding comes up, and we go into competitive bid, and we start upgrading equipment in these buildings down the roads in the years to go. You're gonna have more efficient equipment, also providing better returns. Adding to this, it becomes a very cumulative process. So, overall, um, these projects are gonna take place, some during the day, during working hours, some in the evening, like spots in the library. We don't want to work while they're in the building, so we'll go at night, so it's less intrusive to people. Um, should take, when we start, they're estimating three to four weeks total for everything on it. Um, so, pretty excited about this one, too, and I think these are very worthwhile projects that, you know, it's, it's a good use of the money.
I think another thing to point out, too, is, 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 uh, beyond the savings, is that in order to remain a green community, we have to honor our commitments that got us there in the first place, one of which is to reduce our energy consumption by twenty percent over a five-year period. So, this is going to be using, you know, money that was given to us by the state to do this work, to get us closer to that goal. Um, and so, you know, I, I think it, uh, you know, John, you know, looked at putting something together because, in order for, um, this money to be spent, um, hopefully by the end of the calendar year, because at that point, the town then can become eligible for competitive grants through the Green Communities Act. Uh, and, but you've gotta spend that money first. So, doing this money, it's spent, you know, in some of these smaller pieces, initial savings that, that carry from year to year, helps us towards our energy goal, energy reduction goal, and also now allows us to be able to be competitive for some of these other grant cycles, um, through the state. So, I think it's pretty much a win-win.
Yeah, absolutely. It's great.
Excellent.
Thank you for...
How about these old windows here in town hall, Mr. Perrin?
How did I know that was coming from you, Mr. Kalenda?
Plan.
Uh, I'm working currently with the town's ESCO, and we're trying to develop a package that would include certain projects. I can and/or cannot, at this point, tell you whether or not those would qualify in what we would need to generate the savings that would make it a viable project for the town. We are working on that now, but I would be speaking way out of turn and way too soon to give you an answer on that.
It's on the radar, and I know it's something you've been working on for years. And, uh, you know, and, and the numbers have to work out, and the, the type of windows have to work out. Um, you know, I think we were very close to having it funded years ago. I think we were one vote short. Um, so, but anyway, I know that it's, it's a concern for many of the employees who work here, uh, both in the winter and the summer. Um, you know this, so, uh, but anyway, thought I'd bring it up once again.
I'm not surprised.
Yeah, the goal, yeah, the goal of working with these ESCOs or energy services companies is to try and put together projects that are paid for out of the savings that they generate. And by doing that, you then amass a little bit of a piggy bank that you can then use to carry to other projects. See what I'm saying? So, you know, unfortunately, something like the windows doesn't have a great payback, which then allows us to, so it's something that I think, you know, maybe you say you can build towards, but it can't be the thing you want to do, that you can do right out of the box. Otherwise, you're gonna have to, you know, probably, you know, infuse that process with some additional money.
Believe me, I'm, I remember vividly the, uh, the ROI discussion from one particular former selectman. Um, and so, no, I understand that, uh, but there's a lot of other reasons why they should be done.
No, the ROI was not pretty.
For our employees, so.
Yeah.
Okay, any, Ms. Faniff?
While we have John here, I, I think this board needs to recognize the amount of time that he's spending on the Fayetteville Hall disposing of that building on our behalf. Yeah. It's falling behind, and it's not because of the commitment of the individuals. It's the timing, the holidays, you know, just basically the time of year, and they're down a member, getting a quorum's difficult. So, I think on our end, we have to do whatever we can to assist them. John's trying to do that, but again, I think we have to have Mark's involvement in that as well, to get this thing moving ahead, so we don't have an empty building. And I know it's not on the agenda. It's just an update, so we really have to try to help as much as we can.
Yeah, and Mark, Mark has been, you know, involved, you know, behind the scenes, and John and I have worked. John has been attending the meetings, but we have been discussing, you know, how this is gonna move forward and, you know, how some of these interests, um, you know, and the things that are being brought up can be assimilated into, you know, the document when the building is put out for disposition. Um, I, I think it's gonna be incumbent upon this board to take that information back and decide, how do you want to handle that in the RFP?
Right, but Mr. Schifrin and I are attending the meetings, but it, it's difficult at times to move things ahead. And like I said, it's not a criticism, but we're really gonna stay on top of it somehow. And they're down a member, which we have to advocate to get that seat filled.
So, we, and, and, and refresh my memory, you're down a member, which committee are you referring to?
It's the Fayetteville Hall Disposition.
Right. CHOPSY does not have a representative, because Mr. Schifrin and I were both on CHOPSY as a citizen, as your rep.
Okay.
And we're not a member of the committee, either one of us, as a Board of Selectment member, because we're gonna make the ultimate decision. CHOPSY's down. Three members because of Mr. Schifrin's.
So, right, but at the end of the day, it's up to this board to make that decision, regardless of whether or not...
But it would help with a quorum for their, their needs. That's what I'm saying.
But if they can't do it, we still have to move forward. I'm with you. We cannot go back to town meeting
Right.
And have done nothing in a year.
And they're not, it's not that they're not doing anything.
I know that, but I'm saying...
Understand, it's difficult.
If we haven't, if this board hasn't done anything in a year, because we're waiting on others, because they haven't had...
And that's what I'm saying. We may need those funds for something else.
We, yes. So, at the end of the day, I think it's incumbent upon this board to make a decision as to, okay, has that RFP been published? Is it, is it, is that house, is that property available for sale?
And I think, I think when this board set up the, the charge for the committee, you set it up in such a way that that's reflected. I mean, this is, this group is gonna be done by, I think, the middle of January.
Yes, that's right.
January fifteenth.
We're gonna get everyone's attention.
I'm not looking to extend it.
No, no, you know, and, you know, and I...
We need to move forward with...
No, they have met.
Right.
But now they're at the critical stage that they're...
Mr. Perrin?
Pressure's on because of the deadline.
Mr. Perrin's under the impression that, you know, we're a meeting or two away from getting, from them getting themselves into where they feel comfortable with a recommendation. And then that, this board...
Have to be before us on a certain date. That's what I'm saying.
And then this board can commit, well, so they, so I think they expire, I think the fifteenth.
January fifteenth.
Fifteenth, which is a Monday. We meet on the sixteenth, okay? So, the goal would be to have them in, you know, to present their recommendation to you on the sixteenth.
And whomever it is, even if there's not a...
Make them aware that be on this agenda on the sixteenth.
Yes.
That's what I'm saying. They need...
Yes.
To hear from us, too.
And even if, even if it's not a full body,
Yes.
You know, we'll take the information that's available to us, and then it's still up to us to, you know, make the call.
So, thank you.
Most welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Perrin.
And thank the committee.
Any more questions?
No.
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Mr. Purple, I think we have an annual license renewal. Do we want to do that now?
Uh, so, if, if you want to, if you want to vote these, um, this evening, um, you can do that now. You can sign these later, but I do want to, I do wanna, um, ask that you do table, um, two of the items that are in here, um, the common victualers license, and also the restaurant wine and malt, both for St. Mark's Golf Club. Uh, you know, at this point, you know, I would not recommend that the board, um, uh, you know, reauthorize licenses for a property that the town does not own, and at this point, the contract with, um, with the vendor, um, and, uh, St. Mark's has ended. Uh, and so, until that relationship is renewed, and the town becomes, you know, owns the property, I think at that point, you know, and we establish, you know, a new contract with the management company, if that's, if that's the road we go, at that point, you know, we would, um, you know, we could, uh, deal with that. However...
Is that particular one held for that purpose, or does it need to be?
What do you mean? It's been, it's been held by the golf.
Right, so if we don't approve it tonight...
You, you need to approve this by the end of the month.
Yeah.
Okay, in order for it to be val- otherwise, it's going to, you know, revert back, and it becomes an open license, and if you, let's say you reach an agreement for a new management contract sometime in January, the St. Mark's Golf Club Incorporated, which is the name of the company holding this, is gonna have to come back and apply as a new license.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and to, to the extent we can avoid that, that would be great, however,
I think we should avoid it.
You know, a lot of this is a timing piece. You know, we need to close on the property, which, you know, um, council is, is trying to put together, you know, this week, um, and, you know, and it may bleed into next week at this point, and then golf committee will recommend to us, you know, um, a recommendation for the management contract, subject to successful contract negotiations, and then, you know, the board needs to, um, you know, determine how we want to do those contract negotiations, you know, with the selected vendor. And New England Golf is the only one who put in. So, it's not a big secret who we're gonna be dealing with, um, if in fact we come to a successful contract. So, that's, i- it's all a timing piece, but if we don't want this to lapse and then add to become a new license, we need to finish this by the end of the month.
I agree with that. All right, so which, which ones do you suggest are...
So, essentially, like I said, so the, the only, the only two that I would ask that the board, um, um, you know, table for the evening is the common victualers license for St. Mark's Golf Club Incorporated, and the restaurant wine and malt for St. Mark's Golf Club Incorporated, both thirty-six Corderville Road.
Okay, any other holds by anyone? Okay, uh, then I would move that we approve, uh, the remaining as provided in our packet. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, with the date twelve, five, seventeen as a header.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Faniff. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, um, just a, you know, a point of personal privilege. I do want to, and I don't have this opportunity often, because the person's not normally sitting here, but, um, I do want to thank Lori Esposito. Um, you know, this is her baby. Um, uh, she has several of them, Town Report, blah, 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 but, but this is really a, a very, you know, important one for the town. Um, she helps to coordinate this, you know, effort. She's done some streamlining of it since she's been here. Um, this is a lot more electronic now than it ever has been. I think we're continuing, you know, we, we still have some things that we can do, you know, to improve the process, but it, it's been much better. Um, and, uh, you know, she, she helps to coordinate it, uh, and, uh, she makes sure that all the information, um, is here before any license is gonna be released. So, I just wanted to publicly thank her for that.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
Can I add one?
Please.
Comment just on, um, just as a point of reference, because the news, the new Rose Garden had come before us for the renovations they wanted to do. Uh, I just wanted to say, I guess they opened up this week, so with their new sushi bar, they are now open for business.
So, you'll be giving us a review?
Ah, sure, absolutely.
Now, the parking lot was full. It was either yesterday or the day before. There's a lot of business there, so.
Yeah, so that's just FYI.
Okay. All right, Chairman's report. The only thing that I wanted to know from Ms. Faniff, so you, so I know there was lots of comment about the golf course today. There was commentary about the, you know, the CR pending. There was, you attended a meeting, did you attend the last meeting of the?
CR?
Yes.
Last night.
Okay. Um, you, you able to provide an update to the other board members about how, I wasn't able to attend?
They're planning on having a forum next Monday.
Okay.
But they're looking for, they have the perimeter plan. Attorney Aldo Sabriano was there last night with special legal counsel, but they need to identify the other areas where the, I guess, the tee box and the facility itself might be, and the septic system. They don't have that detailed plan yet, and they're working on it, and they're working very hard. Conservation is, they're before conservation on Thursday. Um, so, it's a work in progress, but they're still missing some pieces. So, all I'm asking is that, um, Mark communicate with them as far as where a detailed plan is, so they don't have a, an unnecessary forum without the information they need. So, maybe tomorrow you could tell them if there is a plan, Mark, or...
Yeah, I've, so I'll update you on some of the emails I've been doing. Um, so, uh...
Fair cheer, Freddie.
Yeah, so I've had, I've had conversations with, um, the, um, uh, the public safety architect who recommended the surveyor to town council to do the perimeter plan for the closing. So, they have all the, there are three things that, as you said, they need, that, uh, CR committee is looking for. They're looking for the perimeter plan, they're looking for a, um, uh, an envelope of the public safety project, including the location including the location of the septic, and then they're looking for locations of the golf, of, of things for the golf course, of the building, any ancillary buildings. And, um, I think there was a comment that, you know, the holes in the tee boxes. Now, the holes in the tee boxes are something no one's ever looked for and no one's ever put on a plan. And there's going to be an additional cost and timeframe for that, which is probably not going to fit into the CR committee's timeframe. My comment back to the, um, architect this evening is, give me everything you've got for items one, two, and everything you think you can do for three and pull that together, and I'm going to provide that. And we're going to say, that's really the extent of what we've got without spending more time and money. And I, I think it may be more the time piece than the money piece to do additional survey work to identify each hole and tee box, or each tee box and green on the entire course.
Was it each one that they were looking for or was it just where the new ones were proposed? I thought it was just from the meeting I had attended.
The new ones are easy, the new ones we have.
Well, there was a plan presented by a golf course member, committee, that they have an idea.
Yeah.
I guess this stuff needs to be located.
The golf course, yeah, and, and the public safety architect and the golf course committee architect have been working, again, we talked about this collaboration, they've been working collaboratively on these pieces, so they can get that information, put it on the same plan, and they know that I need that, you know, by end of the week, you know, early Monday, so that we can try and get something. And maybe DPW can print out some large scale maps for them for the public hearing on Monday.
Just communicate with the Chair of the Committee, with Ms. Gillespie and Beth.
Once I know I can get what I've been told I can get, then I will let her know, okay?
So, that meeting is Thursday?
Um, my understanding that we're going to have, Thursday with Conservation Planning Board, Monday evening, I believe, and they're talking about having a public forum on Monday, uh, what's their official name? The Golf Course Conservation Restriction Committee, Monday evening, so...
Okay, I did have a, a conversation with Attorney Cipriano today, um, and I've seen some guidance that he's been given as to who should hold the conservation restriction. Um, I think he has some, and I share some of his concerns, that, uh, um, there are folks within the committee that we appointed that may be going against his, um, his guidance, his legal guidance as to who should hold that, um, restriction. Or at least there is a lot of discussion and who knows where it's going to ultimately play out. But, um, I think Thursday's meeting is important, I understand he's going to go and explain to the Conservation Commission that, um, he believes that, um, it is legally, uh, the best case for the town if the Conservation Commission holds the restriction in conjunction with another entity, whether that be Solf or another, um, so that, um, you know, or another entity even outside of Southborough. But, uh, he thinks it's vitally important that the, the, you know, the town's own, um, commission be a holder of it. If we had to do anything down the road, it, I think, to me, it makes great sense and it, uh, he thinks it carries significant legal weight. So, anyway, that was something that he shared with me, I've seen that in the guidance that he's already provided, um, to the, to, uh, the Conservation Restriction Committee, so...
He provided that last night as well, and I didn't make a statement on, on behalf of this committee. And I didn't say anything other than after I walked away, I have to tell you, because there is so many moving parts, we do not even have a management agreement right now to have a third party managing the town's business, I think would be cumbersome. Um, so I'm not in favor of the town not being, the conservation not being responsible for this piece. It, I don't think anything's going to happen there that it's not going to be noticed immediately. It's going to require response of this community fast. It's right in the center of town, it's not an, it's not an isolated piece of property. So, I, for one, I'm, I'm going on the record that I think the town should be the responsible party for this, through the conservation.
And I will completely agree with you, Ms. Faniff, as well as Town Council, that seemed to be sage legal advice, um, that I think, uh, you know, the town should follow. So, we'll see, you know, where Conservation, uh, Commission goes with it when they hear that same advice on Thursday. So, I don't know if I'll be able to attend, I, I would like to on Thursday, but if, if others can and, and hear what, uh, you know, Attorney Cipriano has to, um, has to say, I think it's important. That's all I had, Mr. Purple.
I have nothing else, uh, this evening, but I do want to let the board know, um, that we'll be having a discussion on December nineteenth, it's kind of a little Christmas present for you, um, as to where we are with the budget process. Um, just giving you an update, um, Mr. Ballantyne and, um, Ms. Krieger and I have been meeting to talk about where we are with capital. Um, all the requests, uh, pretty much have been, have been, um, received from departments, their wish list, so to speak. Uh, and now we're matching up the wish list and, um, the, um, the revenue. And, um, um, all I will say is there is a gap. And, um, so we'll have some conversations, uh, Brian and I will present to you the information we have, um, our thoughts on moving forward, um, and, uh, getting some guidance from this board as to things that you want to take a look at, um, and, uh, you know, just, I, I think a conversation of how we move forward into, um, finalizing a budget that, you know, that is appropriate and, um, that you'd be comfortable supporting for town meeting. So, that's coming at the next meeting on the nineteenth. I'm going to try to keep the agenda kind of lean, it is the, the last meeting before the holiday. Uh, but, but that, I think that is an important component for you to at least begin to think about and understand because you know as well as I do, once you come back, you know, once everyone gets in the swing of things after the first of the year, things move very quickly. And if we're going to be, um, potentially discussing maybe a special town meeting, you know, we heard that bandied about tonight for some funding, if funding is needed sooner than waiting for annual for the golf course, that's going to disrupt our process as well. So, I'm glad that we started a little bit earlier this year and, and working with advisory, um, you know, to try and, and, uh, make them more of a partner in the process, early in the process, so that they're not getting everything thrown to them end of January and everything, okay? Now you guys figure it out, here's what we think. Um, so if they understand things in the process as we, as we go along, it makes it easier for them to review that. So, uh, next week, in between the two meetings, you'll be getting, um, that information, that we'll present that night, so you have a chance to review it, um, and, and maybe can develop some thoughts and some questions in advance of the meeting. And obviously, Brian and I would be available to, um, to meet with, uh, to meet with you to have discussions as, as you see fit.
All right, yes, Ms. Faniff?
A quick question on process, I know you meet with the department heads and you put a budget together with each department head, I understand that part. Do you, before you present the budget to us, do you sit down with the entire staff to tell them, so each of them can explain what they're giving up and why we're going in this direction, so they understand the impact between departments?
So, we will have a department, uh, we'll have a department head meeting, uh, it's the second, second Tuesday, so it's the off Tuesday of when, because I don't want to, I don't want to have other meetings that the nights that we get together, because there's always something that, that, uh, that, that changes the day. And we'll meet next week and basically they will get a thirty thousand foot view. I mean, you know, they don't need to unders- you know, understand that, you know, this person asked for this and they're not getting, but they can, they need to understand, here's where we are with the revenues, here's where we are with the expenses, and, and these are where the numbers come out and these are some of the things we're going to be bringing to the selectmen. Um, one of the things that was talked about tonight with the public safety proj- uh, project is we're going to have to go back and do some value engineering on some of this stuff. And what I'm hoping, and I think, um, Mr. Malanowski agrees with me, is that when I go to the departments, I don't go to the police department or I say, you know, we're going to have a, a five percent across the board, you know, reduction. Um, that, that's not how I think, you know, is equitable to do. But if we go to the department and say, you know, um, I need you to cut your budget by ten thousand dollars, you know your budget as, you know, better than I do because you have to live within it, you tell me where you can live with those cuts, rather than me going into the police and saying, we're just going to reduce the overtime, because that's just the easiest thing and then you'll have to figure it out. And with the public safety project, I think that's what some of these subsequent meetings after last night, you know, will be, is going in with the chiefs and sitting down and saying, you know, here's where we're seeing the cuts as the architect and the OPM, but what do these mean to you? There may be things in there that haven't been identified yet, that the chiefs feel would be better places to do the reductions to save some of, you know, uh, to, you know, save some of the other things that are more important on a day-to-day basis. So, yeah, so the department heads, a long-winded answer to a short question. Um, yeah, we're, we're going to sit down, at least let them know where we are so that there's no surprises, you know, when we come up, you know, in front of the selectmen.
So invite them to our meeting and if we don't hear commentary from them or something different from what you're presenting or the way we're thinking, we will have to assume that that's, they're all satisfied. I don't want to go to an advisory board meeting like I did last year and find out, nobody agreed with anything and we're going through this whole pace again, I'm trying to avoid that, that's why I'm saying.
So, yeah.
Have them come in here.
So, I, so I, so I've talked, I've talked with, you know, with, um, with Mr. Peters and obviously, you know, no one wants to have a process that, that...
Not working.
Well, it's not that it's not working, it's that, you know, that, that, you know, we, we took a budget we thought was good and then to the eleventh hour, and then to get everybody good, we ended up going through and changing everything, um, and, uh...
All right, I just don't want to repeat that.
I'll leave it there so that we don't, we don't, you know, get into...
But let's try to avoid those things.
But, but absolutely, and that's why we're doing these things earlier, that's why we're trying to keep everybody moving at the same process, so advisory is there with us and has that same information, you know, actually, we speak quite frequently.
I know you do, I appreciate that.
Um, and, uh, you know, and try to keep them updated on, on information as well as this board. Obviously, this comes to you first, they understand that, so you'll see this information twenty-four, thirty-six hours, you know, before they'll get it, but still plenty of time for everybody to review it and, and be able to provide commentary back on it.
I appreciate that, I do, thank you.
Anything else?
That's all I've got.
Uh, yes, Mr. Peters, please.
I have had very good cooperation as Chair with, uh, with Mark. And to the point that was made by Bonitius, uh, Bonitius now, uh, the way to go back to a department and say, you take care of it, it needs to be done before the time, it cannot be done at the end. I mean, it's just, we cannot go there. I do want Mark, and I did discuss it, it's up to you to decide whether you want to do it or not, but we will get the same information before the time. And we would like to have a joint meeting, I, I mean, we will be, yes, but it's your prerogative. But we would like to be, attend your meeting where the budget is presented. And then we can hear also see where you are going and, you are the executive. Um, and as the CEOs, you are going to, we can get some direction there already where your priorities are. And, uh, so we had a discussion about it and, uh, so I'm not taking it away from him, but that's how I think the best way is to proceed and that's our request, uh, to make this work better. And, and so if at the meeting on the nineteenth, we've penciled it in, I've already notified our, you know, the committee, uh, that we would join the meeting.
So, I, I, just so you know...
It will not be our meeting, but it'll be your meeting, but we will be there and if you would allow us, we may ask some questions as where you're going to heading, where you are heading as well.
Right.
We need to get a read.
Yeah, and you and your members are, are welcome to every meeting, but especially that one, so, absolutely.
Yeah, but I, I would do, the reason why I'm saying it is, is if we could, I think we need to have the opportunity to kind of also, we need to be able to read where it's going.
Sure, I agree.
More than just attending the meeting.
Yep, absolutely, Mr. Peters.
Why don't we plan on a joint meeting?
All right, thank you, sir.
Post it as a joint meeting also with them.
Well, I, so, we had discussed about a joint meeting, but I think obviously, you know, Adrian, you know, a- as I think he just stated, you know, it's this board's decision as to how you're going to move forward and then based on that, advisory then needs to react to that. So, I, I think that's why he really doesn't favor posting it as a joint meeting, it's more of hearing, and I, and I, I want them here because I'd like everybody to hear the same thing at the same time so that I don't get an email the next day saying, oh, I heard that this is what was said, or I heard... You know, it, it's better for everyone to have it at the same time, um, but...
As long as they're here.
He's going to post it, they're going to post it anyway, so I don't see any harm in saying it's a joint meeting if they're going to be here.
But I think all Mark is saying is it'll be our discussion, you know, there'll be, there'll be surely questions from any member of other boards and committees, but, you know, if, if he wants to post it, great, if he doesn't and invites, you know, all those members to come, either way, they're all here.
I think it's sema- yeah, I think it's semantics, Bonnie, simply because everyone's going to be here and, you know, I, I can tell you, I can tell you they're going to participate in the discussion, so...
It's probably safe to, to, to have it posted, so, thank you, Ms. Faniff, anything else, Mr. Purple?
That is it for the evening.
Consent agenda item number one, appoint council on aging, alternate member Carol Yozo as a full-time member, alternate member Vincent Acampora as a full-time member and Joyce McAnoskes to an alternate member. Uh, I would move those three, is there a second?
Second.
There is, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, um, number two, approved request from Recreation Committee Commission to increase FY eighteen revolving fund spending, Mr. Purple, do we have an amount there?
Uh, you had information in your packet, which I am, there is a, uh, there is a, an email from the Recreation Director in your packet, essentially looking to increase the spending cap for the rec revolving fund from three forty-two oh ninety-four to six hundred thousand dollars. Um, this is, if you recall, each year the revolving funds at town meeting are approved or reauthorized each year and they have a specific spending limit attached to them. The reason for, and, and then any time during the year that, um, that the, uh, the amount needs to be adjusted, it's done through, by this board, has to be approved by the Board of Selectmen. The reason for this, uh, uh, increase request in spending is due to the continuation for the Chote Field Light Projects and the Fay Memorial Playground Project. What that means is there's more money that's being spent, it's not that there's additional tax money being spent or, or anything of that nature, but more of the expenditures are being done through the revolving fund, which is going to require an increase, um, to that, to that spending limit. Um, I did have a conversation with Mr. Ballantyne as well as, as Ms. Krieger and they both concur that this is a, an appropriate request and, you know, would suggest that the selectmen approve it.
All right, thank you for the explanation, any questions? Is there a second, first of all?
Second for discussion.
Second, yes.
One question, I know there always seemed to be a question upon, um, revolving fund limit amounts needed to be within a certain percentage of, uh, was it a total budget dollar amount or some? I, I forget the specifics of that and is, are we still within those limits with this request, do you know?
Uh, so I am not sure, I can answer that question right now. Uh, I'm not sure exactly what the, you know, what, what the limits, the limits might be, so...
That was always a smart question, Mr. Butler asked when, uh, I was back on advisory.
And it's, it's a good question, so...
Is it temp, it might, I'm not going to say what I think it is, all right.
Yeah, so, no, I, so look, if, if the board wants, you know, I don't think that this is critical to be done this evening, I think it's something that probably could wait until our next meeting, if the board wishes to table it so we can get the answer and make sure...
So, here's what I may propose, I know we may have another question, but as a, a proposal, we could, uh, vote to approve it contingent upon the fact that it is within the requisite limits. Could we not? So, we don't have to bring it back up again just for a, just for a vote. I mean, if it is, I have no issue with, in approving it and, and we'll see what the others say.
No, I mean, so, I, I have comfort in doing that because the Finance Director and Town Accountant, you know, have concur that this is an appropriate request, but I cannot answer Mr. Shea's question this evening, so...
So, I would, my, my motion would be to approve it contingent upon, uh, that it is within the proper limits and if it's not, then the vote is, is nullified. Does any other thoughts? Does that work?
Has advisory, um, have they gone before advisory on this?
No, advisory doesn't have, yeah, no, advisory doesn't have to weigh in on this.
They don't?
No, this is the selectmen's decision.
We, we, if we don't approve it, uh, I think there's going to be some problems with, uh, Chote Field Lights and the Fay Memorial Playground Project, so...
So, I'm, I'm in favor of an increase so that we continue with those projects, but I don't want it approved to an amount that we're violating some statutory limits.
So, I say, thus my contingency to the approval, um, I will, uh, revise my motion to that effect. Is there a second on that?
I have a question.
There's no second, okay, if there's no second, then it dies, then they don't have, they don't get it unless they...
So, I would request that they, we get an answer to that question and put it on the consent agenda for the next meeting on the nineteenth.
All right, I would disagree, but I'm happy to wait, I don't think it matters, is, was what I, what I'm hearing from Mr. Purple, Ms. Faniff?
Um, I had some of the same concerns today as far as what's going to get finished. My understanding, these funds are not to finish Chote Field or Fay Memorial Field. That was a question I called in here today. At, starting on July first of this year, there was three hundred and forty-two thousand ninety-four dollars in that account with the expenditures up to eleven... dollars in that account, with the expenditures up to eleven twenty-nine twenty-seventeen, they've expended out of that two hundred and ninety-eight thousand some odd dollars. What they're asking for this evening is the difference between the remaining balance of that date and the difference of three hundred and one thousand dollars. I think we really need to know what it's for, and I understand they have programs that they're covering, but what is it? To get them through the end of the year, and I don't think it's unreasonable, I think we need to know, and they're not starting any additional projects unless they're a hundred percent funded. That's my understanding of our request.
Right, so you're under, you know, and you're understanding that this isn't simply these two projects, and, like I said, Mr. Schifrin, I speak better than, but, but I'll, I'll go until he stops me, is, you know, obviously, this revolving fund, you know, there are funds that are taken in for programs, there are funds that are taken in for, for summer camps, and for things of that nature, that flow through the revolving fund, and that's the genesis usually of the, of the three forty-two number. It's these projects that are causing the issue.
Right, that's basically what I'm saying.
Right.
The ones that are being requested have nothing to do with those two projects.
Right.
And my understanding, nothing to do with the Niri Lights or Mooney Field. It's outside of that, it's programs, not.
The two, well, no.
Offsetting costs to something that was represented at town meeting to cost X.
But it's potato, potato, because all of those things, well, Bonnie, all of those things are wrapped into the same piece, you know, because, you know, it says it right in the memo, the, the reason for the requesting an increase of spending is due to the continuation, you know, of the Chote Field Light Project, you know, the paying of those items, and then all, you know, the Fay Memorial Playground Project.
So it sounds like there's a lot of questions still need to be answered.
Well, I was on the understanding, there is no outstanding dollar amounts needed for the Chote Lights.
Mr. Chairman, can I just to say, Ms. Doreen was here.
Did you say a name?
Karen Muggeridge.
On your behalf of a?
Parmenter Road, I'm here speaking as an individual, just to let you know, Doreen Ferguson was here, she would have been able to answer all these questions, she was under the impression that the consent agenda had already been approved, so I just want to put that out there.
Alright, so thank you for that, I think we're going to table this one.
So that's fine, we can table it to the nineteenth, we'll have all the questions answered. If there are additional pieces that you're looking for beyond, you know, Mr. Shea's question, assuming, making sure that the, the increase is within the permissible limits, just, you can send those to me, and, and, and I can make sure that those are answered as part of this.
And if they're covering additional costs to warrant articles, we need to know that so we can say yes to the dollar amount to finish those projects.
Microphone, can you repeat that, please?
In framing the question, all I'm asking is that warrant articles were approved at town meeting for a sum of money. If the monies appropriated at a town meeting are not enough, what is the difference, and is it coming out of these funds?
So are they, are they covering costs beyond what, for projects beyond what was voted at town meeting, correct? Okay, I got it.
Before they start anymore.
Yep.
Thank you, Ms. Faniff. Other matters properly before the board? I have none, no public comment. Mr. Litt?
Sorry to harass you one more time. I was wondering if we could get an update on the selection process for the Municipal Technology Committee? I haven't seen any interview meetings posted, or heard anything since the last meeting.
Mr. Purple, anything from your perspective on that?
No, I, I don't have an update yet, I don't, you know, I, I'm not going to put Mr. Schifrin on the spot, but I know that, you know, the individuals from each of the, each of the respective boards or committees, you know, we're going to be getting together and conducting those interviews, I'm not sure what the process is yet, and, you know, I know the intention was, is that hopefully we would have something back before our board on the nineteenth, so that each of respective boards or committees could move on, on their appointments and get that done, and get that committee up and running.
Alright, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Litt.
Thank you.
Okay, anything further? Okay, so the board will be entering into executive session, per mess general laws, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one, and will not be returning to open session for exemption number two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for contract negotiations with non-union personnel, i.e. fire chief, requires a roll call vote, Kalinda, aye?
Shea, aye.
Rush, you aye?
Schifrin, aye.
We are in executive session.
So two things.